Lauren, I got it.
Hello, we're good. There are a few seats in the front if someone would like a chair. Okay, if I could have everyone's attention please. Thank you so much. Welcome to the School Board Candidate Forum. I am Lauren Lappin, I will be moderating tonight. Thank you for taking your time this evening on a very, very rainy evening to come. Traditionally, this event gets a single-digit turnout. So I love that we have standing room only. It's amazing to see so many people here and so many people engaged in this process. So thank you, thank you so much for being here. I want to give you a rundown of the event and just a few rules before we start. Each candidate will have the opportunity to make an opening statement. They only have two minutes, we have a giant clock over there, so everyone knows. Thank you John for bringing our Edgemont clock. It takes a village, folks, it takes a village, so we're all gonna do this together. After opening statements, there are six questions. Thank you to everyone in the community who submitted your questions. I looked through all of them and really tried to find some themes around them and then created six questions. All of the candidates received the questions this morning, so they know exactly what the questions are. Because of how long it will take for six people to answer six questions, we are not going to have open Q and A from the audience. This is an opportunity for each of the candidates to share their thoughts with you and everyone knows exactly what the questions are. I ask everyone to please be respectful of the six individuals who are brave enough to sit in these chairs tonight. There's a lot of you in this room. Not everyone loves speaking in front of this many people, so please keep that in mind. I'm going to ask you, please, no clapping, no cheering, no booing. We're really here to listen. So that is my ask of everybody in this room. Thank you, I see a lot of heads and I appreciate that. Thank you for your nodding. So, we are going to get started. So everyone knows the questions and the opening and closing statements will be done in a bit of a random order, just in the interest of keeping everything equitable. So for the questions, I actually used ChatGPT, thank you. And I said, please give me six random orders of these six letters. So, you will see that I'm kind of passing the mic in a random way and I'll be saying their name for who's coming next, that's why. Okay, it's by design, we're trying to keep it so that it's different every time. So, new technology. With that, we're gonna start with opening statements, Grace is gonna get us started. So I will turn the mic over to her.
So good to see everybody. My name is Grace, I have three terms in the district and I'm running for my second term on Board Education. All of, all six of us are advocating for change tonight as we collectively agree that there are things within the district that can and should be better. Whether it's communication, transparency, curriculum, technology, we all, and I mean everybody in this room recognizes that there is ideas that we can collectively come together to contribute to improve outcomes for our children. So the distinction that we'd like to highlight for our answers tonight is how an effective board member would approach the role and what success for both of them. I'll start by arguing that first-term board service is predicated on your ability to build strong trusting relationships. If you're able to establish the confidence and cooperation of your fellow trustees, community members, district staff, they will carry through an incredibly steep learning curve that accelerates your ability to get work done. It's through these relationships that I advocated for board representation on the Special Education Committee during my first year, was asked to be Vice President by my third, and teamed up with our legal team, our Director of HR, Head of Facilities, Assistant Superintendent of Business, and fellow board members in producing over forty policies that guide our priorities around topics like concrete protections for all students, ensuring tax dollars are benefiting district residents, and an elementary school version of our code of conduct where our youngest understand their rights and responsibilities. This community is filled with amazing people and is so often the case, it takes a village to get things right. As a board member, you are one of seven voices that have been called upon to serve on behalf of your committee. And what I've learned is that humility, stability, and an unshakable personal integrity are required in order to earn the respect of the people you would need to learn from, rely on, and make progress with. Thank you.
That's gonna be tough to follow. Thanks, I'm Mark Fleischer, two H's by the way, in case you're wondering. Been an ex-Mom resident for fourteen years now. My wife Marissa and I, who is much more, much better known in the community than I am, made the decision to move here, like all of us did, which is great school, easy commute. And we didn't have our two youngest kids at the time, but we couldn't be more happy than we did. And it really is, I think, one of the best decisions we collectively ever made as a family. So how did I get here this evening? That's a good question, I sometimes ask it myself. Last summer, I retired from my job at a hedge fund that took, as anyone here, a lot of us know, takes, we're working sixty, eighty hours a week. And that's just, don't have the ability to dedicate the time and effort for something like the school board, all the important responsibilities that Grace just helped. But I actually did have, now do have the time to do so. And so I was asked, I think part of the reason was the failed budget vote last year that some of you probably heard about. Could we get more people with financial experience in the board who can explain some difficult, complex topics? So that's why I'm here. I did a lot of research, is, I always did in my thirty-year career, to see what does it take to be a board member, what can you actually do? Can I actually have real positive impact? Would I be good at this? And I've asked all those questions and talked to administrators, teachers, neighbors, former board members, I really thought I could. And, you know, that's, that's why I'm here. The, I think, you know, there are key questions that need to be answered. I've written some of them down. Why have so many kids left the district in the last few years? Is Edgemont education what it used to be? How can we overcome the setbacks that all our kids experienced during COVID? How can we take advantage of the technological changes we're seeing today while also mitigating the massively harmful effects of COVID? So, we have a lot to discuss, even with that. I have three seconds left.
Thank you, my name is Jeff Blank. I'd like to thank everyone for coming here, this is amazing. I am so encouraged by the active participation of the community. It's really just a delight to see, I think it's what we need and I'm happy to see it's here. So thank you all for being here. I grew up in Edgemont, I graduated Greenville in ninety-three, I graduated Edgemont High School in ninety-nine. I loved growing up here, it was a fabulous place, I left for college, law school. But my experience at Edgemont set me on my path for my entire career. I was part of the debate team, which was nationally recognized at the time. I was using LexisNexis in ninth grade when there was no website for it, you had to tell them that it we were just way ahead of the curve on things. And going here, the special experience I found at Edgemont made me want to come back. So after I moved away for a while and met my wife, we had our first kid, we moved when he was about eight months old, which is twenty seventeen at this point. We now have a second, we have a daughter who's twenty-two months old. So I'm a second grader, one on the way to Greenville. And I've watched what's happening in Edgemont and I was starting to get a little concerned. Most recently with the bond issue, I would say that is my, what kind of inspired me to get more involved in the board and be kind of more aware of what was going on and forced me to be listening more active in participation on it. And I was really kind of discouraged when I saw what was happening to the community and how so many voices were being sidelined. And that was a little alarming to me. So I'm running primarily with my two running mates here, I know it's individualistic, but we're running as a unit. And we're running for really open communication and to bring the community back into the voice of the board. Because currently they're not, we'll discuss that on the issues tomorrow. But that's the primary driver here, is we want all of you who are using your time tonight to learn more about us, which is amazing. We want to learn more about you and we want your voices heard as we can move forward and try and correct some of the things and keep Edgemont great.
Hi everyone, my name is Lucas Chaffee, I'm an Edgemont grad. I met my wife Sandra in the D building that everybody walked past. A few minutes ago, she's also an Edgemont grad. And we moved, after Edgemont, Edgemont set me up for success, got me accepted into Princeton. I chose West Point to start a career of service. Five years in the US Army as an infantry officer, and one year in a combat zone in Iraq. That's my connection to democracy, my connection to local elections. To see something like this in our hometown is amazing. Never seen this in all the years. We're all here tonight for heart, for heart. There's intention, but we're gonna get through it because of heart and our shared values. The heart for me started about six years ago. Twenty nineteen, there was a late snowstorm in March. Heavy snow, there was a tree right next to our home that couldn't take that snow, pine tree. That snow piled up, 3:00 AM, half that tree snapped off. Stuck right in the middle of our children's nursery, both of whom sleeping in there. Right where my wife or I would have been had we been there at console. That was an experience that got me off the sideline. A few months later, a friend had been talking about how our leadership in Greenberg had been stagnant, we had the same leadership from when we were children. Here in Greenberg, I was shocked, I couldn't believe that we didn't have that innovation. So I said, I'm ready for something different. I ran for town supervisor, earned seventy-five percent of the vote in Edgemont, and learned and fell in love with helping people have their voices heard. We only live once and our kids only go through high school once. Seeing these shared challenges that we all agree, I said, this is the year I want to jump in to catalyze an election that brings in the whole community to renew, revitalize, and reimagine Edgemont excellence. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you to ECC and the SBNC and to all of my neighbors and friends for taking the time to come this evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Elise Paytas, a resident of Edgemont for fourteen years with two teenage girls, save me, in eighth and tenth grades, who both started their educations in Greenville kindergarten classrooms. Professionally, I work in strategic communications with more than thirty years of experience, focused in one of the most complex, dynamic, and regulated industries, healthcare. In support of my clients who range from early-stage biotechs to the largest pharmaceutical companies to patient advocacy organizations, I spend the majority of my work-life bringing together data and evidence, broad expert perspective, insight on policy and legal guardrails, and diverse needs of patients to ensure that our work resonates across stakeholder audiences. As this potential school board role was raised to me, and I began to think about what I could offer the district, I realized that so much of what I'm navigating at work is directly applicable. The key issues in healthcare, building bridges between stakeholders, preparing for new technologies, and coping with new public policies are virtually identical to the strategic priorities for our school district. However, it's also critical that in our dialogue about the future of Edgemont, our kids and their social and emotional well-being don't get lost in this war. This is a topic that many of you, and Alex and I unfortunately, have had a good deal of firsthand experience with and for which I bring many important learnings specific to the important role our schools, teachers, and administration play in the mental health of our kids. Over the past several weeks, I've had the absolute pleasure of working with, getting to know Grace and Mark, whose brilliance, energy, and depth are palpable. It would be an honor to work, learn, and build the future of Edgemont alongside them and the rest of the board in this important role. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Jabor. My husband and our three children have been residents of Edgemont for over twelve years. I'm also seeking a second term on Board of Ed. As a scientist and with a public health background, I bring a really unique perspective, one that's grounded in data, empathy, and deep personal investment in our school's success. During my first term, I consistently asked hard questions, championed transparency, and fought to ensure that every voice in this community is heard. Not just a select few, because the truth is, business as usual isn't working anymore. So we're facing really real challenges. A rising wave of AI that could reshape education, aging infrastructure, and a growing disconnect between families and how decisions are made. But I've also seen what's possible when we work together. Just this year, when parents raised their concerns about class sizes, the district reversed course within days. That wasn't coincidence, that was the power of community action. That's why I believe Edgemont must move from communication to engagement. It's time for shared ownership, not announcements after the fact. My vision for Edgemont focuses on three priorities. One is authentic community partnerships, where we need to really restructure how our board engages with the public through open dialogue, regular forums, and real-time feedback loops. No more decisions made between closed doors. We also need comprehensive educational excellence, that means rigor and humanity. Academic programs that stretch the line, and schools that support mental wellness, character, and creativity. We also need transparent accountability, we need to measure what matters. So this election isn't about more than, this election is about more than candidates, it's about whether we continue down the path of closed-door decisions or choose a new path of collaboration, transparency, and shared ownership. So let's renew, revitalize, and reimagine Edgemont excellence. Thank you.
So our first question is, what do you view as the role of the Board of Education in this school district? And just so you know where we're going, it's Elise, Mark, and Jeff, and then I'll tell you the next story.
Thanks so much, Lauren. So in terms of the role of the board, you know, the way that I see it, clarity between what the board does, what administration does, and what community advocates do is critical for board members to understand and to act in accordance with. The board sets the district's direction and vision, manages budget, and engages with the community to bring back relevant community insight and perspective to the administration. The board are not education experts. That is the role of our administrators, who manage daily operations and are accountable for performance metrics. Having served on both highly effective, well-governed boards and some less effective ones, I've witnessed firsthand how certain practices can impede progress and distract from a board's primary mission, ultimately creating confusion and chaos versus progress forward. I've found that problems arise when board members micromanage rather than govern, when policy and administrative roles blur, when relationships deteriorate, or when we focus on issues where the board is clearly not the appropriate decision-maker versus matters benefiting all students. Healthy boards accommodate difficult questions and foster a culture of trust and progress rather than deference or competitiveness. As a new board member, my first year will focus on active learning, relationship building, and supporting strong governance practices, including a laser focus on communication and community engagement and ensuring that we remain dedicated to our most important priority, creating policies that serve every student in our district.
Thanks, Elise. The, I think the first function of the board is really, this is a supervisory board. And what that means to me is that we hire the best educators we possibly can in every role and hold them accountable with data as we can. One of my favorite quotes from Deming is, "In God we trust, all others must bring data." I think that relates us all, right? We need to have metrics for accountability across the board. That said, we also know that this is a people business and we are educating kids across all stations of life. And it's really, really important to also get those qualitative measures and that's much more challenging. I think that's where all of us stakeholders can really play a role. You know, on that point, it's also, you know, we really need to remember that we're educating all kids. That's not only the right thing to do, that is guaranteed in the New York State Constitution. And so whether it's special ed, the most gifted artists, athletes, or academics, you know, we really need to take that into account. And that's hard, that's really, really hard. And I think we need to lead with humanity and humility in doing so. You know, I think another part of a board's, every board's role is setting a long-term strategy and vision. You know, very, and that includes not only curriculum and, you know, the outcomes, but how we fund it, right? Because at the end of the day, the budget is eighty percent personal cost alone with very little discretionary dollars. So to make those long-term choices requires a really, you know, long-term vision because very little dollars in any given year has much impact, but collectively over five or ten can. So it's how do we think long-term? How do we focus on where we want to be, not next, you know, not next year or two years, but really five or ten years? Because we are taking kids on a lifelong journey that's gonna impact them forever.
Thank you. And I think Elise and Mark both said very powerful things about what the board should do and I think all six of us in general probably have very similar ideas and you could go to the New York State Board Association, they'll tell you exactly what a board should do and that's all true and that's right. But there is more that a board has to do than just what is listed there. They have to be a real part of the community. I find often, you know, you might go to a board meeting, not get an answer and then you'll talk to someone else and they'll say, oh, well, I happen to know a board member, they're on my block, and they told me what's going on. And that isn't the right way to be communicating because we need to make sure that all voices, not just the neighbor who happens to know a board member, are able to answer questions. So you talk about communication, I agree, the board needs to be communicating. There's no reason a board, in part of its role, can't answer questions at a board meeting. It's a very simple thing, it was done for the majority of the history of Edgemont until about 2021. All of a sudden, you come to a board meeting, you say your piece, and then the next person gets up and talks. It's not active communication, it's listening, but it's not engaging. We need to bring back an area where the community can actually get answers to things. No, the board may not know every answer to every question, I wouldn't expect them to. As everyone says, we're not the experts on everything, we have, we hire people and, or the board will hire people, I'm sorry. But listening to questions and then going finding out the answers, getting back to the community, being responsive is a very important thing. And I think a lot, as we've been listening around the community, one of the simmering frustrations is that people may bring things up repeatedly, but they're not getting answers, they're not getting heard, and no action is actually taking place as a result of their feedback. That needs to change, I believe, our team believes, and I think a lot of you would hopefully believe, that the community needs to have its voice heard, there needs to be accountability to those questions, and we need to have that as part of the decision-making process so that we come up with the best policies for Edgemont and for the teachers and for the students and the entire community.
Excellent answers so far, in full agreement. Mark, I fully agree that we need to be hiring the best. One red flag, as you go around as a candidate, you talk to the entire ecosystem, you talk to teachers, you talk to parents, you talk to former students, you talk to faculty, you talk to the administration. Mid-career resignations this year, surprisingly high. Why are people leaving Edgemont? It used to not be that way. Why are we losing some teachers to Scar C? It's not the way it used to be. I don't know the answer to that, I'm not sure who does. But the next, the next board needs to get to the bottom of it and reverse the trend. We're talking about the responsibility to the board member. And a board member is not an activist, but I have been an activist. I've been an activist to get petitions to the point, getting three hundred signatures within seventy-two hours to bring it to the board's attention so that they will take action. We are lucky enough to be elected, I will not be an activist on the board. I will be a person who advocates for the process to allow your ideas to reach the board. My issue that I am passionate about is the pipeline of how ideas get from you to the people seated up here. As Jeff mentioned, you can ask a question at a board meeting, but you don't get an answer. We can change that, because it used to be that way before. When the administration shares data, especially financial data, it shouldn't be in a PDF. It should be in a document like Excel so that you and all the other financial experts in the community can work with it and harness their insights. My issue is making sure your issues can get out here. Thank you.
So at the highest level, the board's responsibility is to create an environment where all of our students can and will succeed. That's a big job, easy to say, and the devil is literally handling the details. And yet that is the board's responsibility and obligation. It's the foundation for success for each and every one of our children without exclusion, without bias, and without special interests. And that's what we mean when we say we are serving the community. Again, we come to our positions as one of seven nonpartisan voices, put our ears to the ground, and listen to people that are advocating for specific improvements, like the Child Committee, who rightfully represents our students in special education. Those that stymied up for the Artificial Intelligence Forum because they're invested in preparing our students for the real world. Or the group of parents who voiced concerns over class size and mobilized a very real consideration that it's time to revisit the target thresholds through policy and [inaudible]. These voices are critical and our job is to extend as many platforms as we can to gather that input because we are in service to you. And I agree, we need to extend more, that's obvious at this point. But that's why every district needs a Board of Education, because we need a group of people that are willing to set aside their personal interests, have the mental strength to stay focused on the well-being of two thousand students at the same time, and need to strategically synthesize how to balance all priorities within the context of legal, policy, budgetary, contractual considerations so that equity is preserved. It is simply irresponsible for a board member to put favorites, advocate for single issues, make promises that they can't fulfill, or speak on anything that they're not fully educated about. There's a very important distinction between people who have ideas and want to amplify community voice and those that are responsible for ensuring that we all make progress together without inadvertently forgetting or marginalizing others in the process. Both of these roles are critical and can partner well with each other. But as a board member, your duty is to promote equity and that requires a resolve to stay focused on that.
So our role as a board member is to really ask those hard questions and to get clarity and ensure that the actions align with the long-term educational excellence. So essentially, what we do as a Board of Ed member is we provide policy development oversight. So we essentially establish and review the educational policies that are going to guide the operation of the school district and we ensure that these policies align with our state and federal laws as well as community needs and values. We also provide fiscal oversight and adoption of all fiscal matters, including using capital reserves, contract negotiations, because these all have fiscal implications. And the board also provides oversight on the tenure process in terms of reviewing the tenure documents. We also provide strategic planning, setting long-term goals, and we also provide guidance and support to our superintendent in executing his, the district's policies and initiatives. But really importantly, what the Board of Ed needs to, provides is community engagement. We serve as a bridge between the district and the community and we bring voice of the community to our administrators and we also give, we show them that the community voice gets to be heard and respected. So essentially, the role of a Board of Ed member is not to always go constantly to go with the flow, it's to represent what the parents and the students and the community need. And perhaps the need might not always be financially or legislatively sound, but we need to be that bridge between district and community and ensure that we make good, thoughtful, and informed decisions.
Our second question is, please tell us about your professional experience, including specific titles, your served, and your current employment. What specific skills would you bring to the board? And we're gonna start with Jeff, Lucas, Elise.
All right, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say I've read everyone's bios, everyone has very impressive careers. I think we're all lucky you're here and I would like to thank everyone for, you know, volunteering for this position, which is gonna take a lot of time. My career, so I started out, I'm a lawyer. I started out my career working for, in New York City, I've been in public service my entire career. I was at the Housing Preservation and Development, I was prosecuting negligent I was at the Housing Preservation and Development, and I was prosecuting negligent landlords in the South Bronx and representing tenants' rights. I moved on from there to the Department of Health, where I had various titles, including, sorry, court of law. I was the Executive Director of Environmental Health Legal. I was the Acting Assistant Commissioner for Regulatory External Affairs, and I oversaw a large swath of regulatory issues, everything from the restaurant grading in New York City, childcare regulations in New York City, road and control, lead paint poisoning, air quality issues, huge swath of regulations. And then I moved on from there to the state, where I was the Managing Director of Legal Operations for the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, where we were registering flood grants, which are all very complicated legal disbursements. But I think the experience that I have that really plays the best and will add the most value to the board is my time at the Department of Health, where my main focus was on creating policies, promulgating rules, leading public hearings, and making sure that the rules that were affecting the entire city were fair and partial, properly commented on, and we came out with the best result. I think one of the things that the board could really work on is its notice and comment period. You'll find that oftentimes, information sessions are having, after things have already been adopted, the recent budget one, the actual public hearing, open and closed in about five seconds. We need to expand that and use that as a tool to make sure that people's voices are heard, and we come up with regulations that have actually been distributed to the community so that they are fairly discussed and you just have a better end result. Because when everyone, Elise, gets to comment on it and understands all the documents before it's adopted, you will end up with a better product that will serve the community.
So I mentioned that my career started as a U.S. Army Infantry Officer, and there were some very intense times there, open training and overseas. What you get in the military is an intense connection to the people that you work with, because you depend on them. And the analogy is very true here. The board depends on the voters, the voters depend on the teachers, teachers depend on the administration. That type of camaraderie is essential, and you only get it through open dialogue and understanding. So what I bring to the board is being a team player. I'm currently a software engineer at a venture-funded company that's got about $100 million in venture capital, bringing credit to truck drivers, expanding their access to capital, and processing $2 million a day in, in transactions. And in software, there's something called no ego, where you document all the problems, and then you look for solutions. And it doesn't matter if you come up with a solution, or your board member comes up with a solution. There's no ego. It matters that it's solved. The team wins and loses together. So when the board is formed in July, the, the board wins and loses together. No ego is absolutely essential. In addition to that, diversity of thought and diversity of experiences are vital. As a software engineer, I bring AI into the conversation. I build tools using AI and integrating AI. So I'll be the only board member who has that deep experience with AI, which is going to be an absolute tsunami, not just to how the children learn, but also the jobs of the community.
Not the only board member. So I built my career as a lifelong communicator. I began my career with work abroad with the Peace Corps and the World Health Organization, living in both Southeast Asia and Africa, where I developed an early focus on equity and an understanding of the deep interplay in culture and health literacy. For the past 30 years, I've specialized in communications, focusing on corporate positioning, scientific communications, new medicine launches, crisis advocacy, policy and health equity initiatives. My professional work is fundamentally an exercise in teamwork and integration. My company, Real Chemistry, not a dating app, is intensely on health technology and AI. We were early pioneers in using predictive analytics to reach underserved patient populations, particularly in rare diseases. And this experience has given me very strong insights into emerging technologies, but also into the governance frameworks needed to be built around them. I'm a natural team builder with a deep understanding of organizational structures, clear accountability frameworks, and I build an intense, I bring an intensely focused, detailed, arranged focus on who's, who's on course to get things done. Throughout my career, I've prioritized mentorship, including some of my favorite extracurricular work as a mentor with the Healthcare Business Women's Association. More recently, I was invited to chair the Communications Subcommittee for the Westchester County Task Force on the Prevention of Gun Violence, where I worked closely with law enforcement, local students, victims of gun violence and their families, and mental health workers across our county to re-envision the approach to gun violence prevention, both in our county and including in our schools. What I'll bring to the board is my expertise in team building, genuine interest in diverse perspectives, my strong communication skills, and a focus on building bridges across the board, administration, enforcement, and the community.
Thank you. So just to start, I was an undergrad at Wharton, which the recruiting person at Bear Stearns called a vocational school for Wall Street. And so, you know, from, you know, early 1997 through last summer, that's what I did my whole life. I moved to the Bayside in 1998, working for multiple hedge funds, took a break to get my MBA from Kellogg in 2003. For the last, or for almost 17 years, ending last, last summer, I was a partner at Al Creek Asset Management, which is a hedge fund in New York, where we invested across mainly distressed situations and event-driven situations. Very complex, a lot of analysis. Obviously, similar skill sets on the, and the local side, but could not be more different than a school board. Right now, my wife and I, her sister and sister's partner, own a small hotel in Jersey Shore, also a complex small business. I've been working, I'm in Dure. So ever since I left the hedge fund, I've been working with small entrepreneurial firms to help them raise capital, scale their businesses, and it's been a blast. Maybe I'll make some money doing that sometime soon. One thing that is very relevant is I joined the Public Company Board last, last summer, where I chaired the Audit Committee. We've made hard choices, we've had hard conversations, we, we switched CEOs, the board is, was completely turned over, we cut 17% of operating expenses, and reinvigorate, reinvigorate the strategy. So, you know, I've done it, that's all I can say. I'm also a member of the National Association of Corporate Directors. I focus on governance, governance as a head of the Audit Committee. Whistleblower reports have come to me, obviously all financial things, you know, what's called enterprise risk management, things that I really didn't know about, but I've educated myself on. These are, you know, these are very real-world experiences that I think are relevant across this board and every board.
So I bring over 15 years of experience in public health, scientific research, and program management at both domestic and international levels. I started my career as Associate in Microbiology and Immunology at Albert Einstein College of Medicine, where I worked on vaccine development for the antihistoxin. I've also transitioned into the hospital setting, where I worked at Montefiore Medical Center, and also worked at a pediatric center designing and leading health surveillance programs for infectious diseases. And I, then I transitioned over to the federal government, where I worked as a health scientist at the National Cancer Institute, helping to provide national cancer control plan in countries such as in the Caribbean and as in Asia. And then I transitioned to the Department of State at their Office of the U.S. World of AIDS Coordinator, where I managed a research portfolio of clinical trials happening in Sub-Saharan Africa, a portfolio of over $400 million. So I think a lot of these experiences have really helped bring in the types of functions that you provide on the board. It's not just about the strategic planning and budgeting and setting policy and stakeholder engagement, but it's really also about having openness and empathy and careful listening and kind of collaborative spirit, decisions being made on date based on data, not assumptions, and really having that commitment to excellence. But what this question doesn't include is, what is also your volunteer experience in Edgemont? You know, as I stated before, we've been in Edgemont for over 12 years, and I started off my volunteer experience as simply as a class parent. Further evolving over the years, being volunteering in the PTA, PTSA, as school president, and also getting, helping out and volunteering. So I, I, I really put my heart and soul in this, in this school community through these various volunteer positions. And, you know, this really isn't a contest of just professional experience, but it's also about the passion, commitment, and the love of the community that I believe Lucas, Jeff, and I bring to the table. Thank you. Sorry for going over.
First of all, I'm going to be talking to you, you can pass, okay? After graduating from UC Berkeley in 1997, which is Cal pre-sports fans in Yuck Valley UC School. I went straight into investment banking and then American Bank of America, Steve in San Francisco, through the Department of Alice Department, provided all kinds of financial modeling, projections, valuation, step rating, variety, finance, and area. In 2000, I went back and studied in the Work School of Business a couple of years after my master's degree, but opting to focus on strategy and operations as a focus on numbers was not my thing. From 2003 to 2006, I was in Merrill Lynch, eventually serving as a Director of Business Development for their September Banking Division. This is when all of the banks were merging after the repeal of Glass-Steagall. And then from 2006 to 2009, was at Marsh McLennan, ultimately serving as a Chief Operating Officer of their Central West Commercial Business Division. And 2009 is where I paused, because my daughter was born in late 2008. And for reasons many of you in the audience will understand, the things had to change. And I ultimately chose to pursue a master's degree in applied psychology through NYU, and since then have founded a group practice up in White Plains that focuses on mental and behavioral health across the life span. We don't have time to get into the weeds of the skills that are required to run that large-scale management and execution of business operations, or what it takes to completely upend your career while having a third kid. But what I will say is that partnerships and an unrelenting work ethic along the will to see things through have been universally critical in my life. I work hard. From a psychological standpoint, this is what I really want people to understand about me. Mental health stems from having a deep and complete respect for the entirety of who you are as you are, and as a community of adults, it is our responsibility to cultivate that self-respect by providing a safe and supportive environment that is unconditionally welcoming. Self-respect is what drives resilience and fearlessness that we want for all of our children. That perspective informs all that I do, and is something that I'm deeply committed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is, what do you anticipate will be a major decision facing the school board during the next term, and how are you preparing for it?
Lucas, Marie, and Grace.
I think that the biggest challenges we'll face in Edgemont are going to be a financial crunch, there's two factors that are outside of our control. We see the federal government restricting funds, and that's having an impact on the state. The state of New York is going through some rough financial times. We have been floated and lucky by being tightly connected to a school district that is less affluent. That is how we are treated here in Edgemont. The amount of state aid that we get is artificially high. When the state starts getting, it's because we're part of Greenberg with how we're treated for the state aid. When New York State starts getting squeezed, they're going to be really looking, very likely, at how state aid is distributed, and they're going to be taking a very hard look at affluent school districts like ours. And they're probably going to do something that's very equitable and unfortunately give us less. So we're going to, the biggest challenges we're going to have in front of us are how do we do more with less? In these kinds of situations, there's often a lot of disagreement. You need to be able to bring the community together. Last night, we brought the community together at the Greenville Community Church for a community listening session. It was a very innovative, first time ever done in Edgemont in recent history, about 40 people having some very honest discussion with each other, some very strong disagreements. People came in icy, but they left warm. It made a noticeable difference in everyone there. We're going to have to do more of that, finding ways to work through our disagreements. Our ticket is bringing innovation in public engagement, not just communication, but engagement. That's where we have to get to.
So I think some of the decisions that were being, that would be faced in the next term is honestly the increasing digital and AI world. I think we need to sort of ensure that we have, you know, a comprehensive review of our curriculum that prepares our students for what will inevitably have a big impact. We also need to sort of, we need to also balance this by having more training and professional development for our teachers to sort of, to help and support in this area, so that they're better prepared. And we also need to have a more concerted focus on our student and teacher wellness. These are areas that we need to sort of improve on, because we have started to implement things like restorative practices, but we really need to start rethinking about other ways in addition to support, to support their wellness. Because our programs are only as good as our teachers. And we also need to work on our strategic plan, which needs to have input from all stakeholders. And also, we need to focus on building, rebuilding trust within our community.
Grace and Mark.
So one of the more pressing decisions that we'll be making actually each year going forward are the annual goals that will be set for the superintendents by association, the administration, and district staff. While you establish district goals and long-term strategic plans for the district, the annual goals will clarify our top priorities for each school year, and also lay out the evidence and data that will be evaluated and assessing how much progress is actually being made. The last few years have been a bit of a whirlwind of change. This is why I actually sought out training earlier this year through the New York School Board Association for this very issue. I recognize that there's an urgency to get this right, and have started preparing materials in order to kick this process off later this month. Another series of decisions that we'll be making relate to our near-term career development and how that will tie into the Blue Ribbon Commission at the state level that has a soft target launch date between 2007 and 2009. We've already made meaningful decisions to shift towards evidence-based programs like the Science of Reading, but knowing that we're eventually headed towards establishing multiple pathways towards graduation, and wanting to expand and further differentiate the ways in which our students learn and demonstrate mastery suggests that we can get ahead of that mandate with some strategic decisions around training our teachers on things like performance-based assessment models, project-based learning, and capstone design, while also identifying areas where we might want to start implementing pilot programs again to get ahead of the curve. Thank you.
So the question is, a major decision facing the school board, right? So let's be specific. I think that's what we're being asked here, and we're being asked as a school board about this decision, right? I 100% agree that we need to engage the community, talk to the community, get input, talk to experts, et cetera. But at the end of the day, we, as a school board, need to make a decision, right? We need to take action, and that's what we're here for. That can't be outsourced to some sort of, you know, I don't know, survey model, right? We need to, you know, we need to hold, we need to be held accountable, and we need to hold the administration accountable for this. So with that said, you know, I've talked a lot about finance. I think there's a number of financial decisions that really need to be made. The bond, whether you like it or not, cannot be relitigated. That is done, okay? The first part of that bond was issued, what, a couple months ago? There's more to come. Every year, we will be spending that bond. Once again, that is, that decision's been made, but we need to, you know, make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck for that, for that line, right? And so, you know, I think that's critical. You know, there's clearly a lot of capital improvements that need to be done in the quarter, close, I would close on that, I think, for the board. I think also, many of you may not know, we talked about, I said, you know, nearly 80% of, it's just over 78% of the entire school budget is personal cost writ large, right? We have, we have four unions representing the vast majority of those folks. You know, very little flexibility there. Three of the four union contracts are out next year, right? This is, you know, there's only so much you can do, but, but, you know, as, as Grace said, the devil is in the details. So we need to really focus on So we need to really focus on that. How can we make sure that we're getting the best teachers, motivating them, keeping them in Edgemont, while also, you know, getting, getting the most value for our money? So more to say, but I've got a lot of seconds left.
Lucas, Jeff.
This may be a shocker, but revamping our approach to communications and communication will be critical in the coming term. You know, given some long simmering frustrations across the board, you know, but I know specifically that the board is already working on revising communication strategies around incidents of discrimination and hate speech, as well as district messages around inclusivity, which I believe needs to continue to be a core focus of ours as we live our all-mans, all freedom. We absolutely need a more effective plan for information flow in and out of the district, and I see some very specific steps to getting there. First, it's really going to be about working, and I know Dylan and the ECC are already starting to paint this by, based on the board meeting just before the last one, in helping us establish a new format and cadence for two-way communications that keeps us connected with our community and ensures that all of our decision-making is met with deep understanding and context. And that means that we're building context around the entirety of the community, whether it's through all of our clubs, the PTA, the PTSA. But I think also critically, a group that we need to really focus on are communicating with our neighbors who are either empty nesters or who are historically kind of underspoken to and underserved in that capacity. Second, you know, we heard you, and you know, as somebody who would be new to the board, thinking about how we're structuring our board meetings and in particular, kind of the, the open mic comment portion of the board meetings could lead to some meaningful discourse as to how and when and if we engage the community in that capacity or through another, through another means. I think the idea of sometimes the simple things are the best, you know? How are we building simple, ongoing communications vehicles? Looking at our website, revamping our website, thinking about simple printed materials, having a calendar that works. So lots of work.
I think we could get a wireless mic as our first. I'm going to piggyback on some of what the talk has been said here. I think there's a lot to discuss around, I believe the biggest decision is to rebuild the social contract that essentially has been fractured by the bond and now I think is broken with a lot of the community. There's a lot of instances of that. When we had our listening session last night, we went for about three hours with 40 people. A common theme throughout it was that people come to board meetings, they don't get heard, they don't feel like they're being considered. And I agree with Mark, you know, the board has to take action. Action is their responsibility, the board, that's not East, that's not a survey monkey, as he says. But to get everyone's input, and we're not going to suffer some analysis paralysis either, but we do need to do simple things that have been done in the past that used to work. Some examples we learned last night is budget hearings used to take place till late in the evening, but they would go through and justify and answer questions about the entire budget before it got adopted. This year, for example, the board already adopted the budget, held an information session, then released the full budget documents. So the order is backwards here. We need to have people know about things at the point that you can have actual functional input, and that will change things. That won't create a backlog, that just moves everything up in the process. So you can have constructive feedback and actually improve the final product. That happened with the bond, which I know we'll talk about on a later question, and that happens regularly. Decisions are just made, and then there were information sessions to tell the community about the decisions. We believe that is the wrong way to go about it. We're not saying that you have to just wait years to hear every single person in the community, but we do need to include them in the conversation earlier at critical points when there is still time to make changes. One of the biggest resources of this community is the residents of it, and we need to leverage that to make better policy choices, to create a better board and a better Edgemont as a whole.
We're halfway there, folks. Our next question is, how do you balance being a disruptor, challenging the status quo and bringing new ideas and insights versus being disruptive, stopping progress due to chaos and conflict?
And Grace, Marie, and Grace. So for me, it has to start with the context of that question. And in this case, is the difference between a disruptor versus being disruptive as a member of the board of education? I only have two minutes, so hopefully you remember how I defined board service in my first question, although you probably didn't. So to be a disruptor is to challenge the status quo. Be assertive while advocating for new ways of approaching your responsibilities, opening ideas that haven't been thought of before and calling out problems that people may be hesitant to raise. All that while being mindful of what's legal, equitable, ethically responsible, and within your purview. And I would hope that all of us who raised our hand to join the board have a bit of a disruptor in us. Otherwise, what is the point of constantly adding fresh perspective every year? We might as well be one of those districts that have 25 to 30-year lifers on board to teach. So I would consider all of us always up for change and ready to fight to what we think is best for the community. But it makes no sense to advocate for things you either legally but charlie or equitably cannot do. In fact, it's disrespectful to mislead the very people you are meant to represent. And that's how I define being disruptive. Regardless of whether you're a board member or considering yourself a community advocate, it's just irresponsible to plant ideas in people's minds that are not feasible and upsetting them with inflammatory statements that have no basis. Being disruptive wastes precious time and resource and not only impedes progress, but can set community back by sowing distrust. Best-case scenario, disruptive people are just misinformed because they haven't done the work to really understand the full context. Worst-case scenario, they have done the work and they just don't care, which suggests that disruptive people can be more focused on their own need for an audience than that of the people that they're paying to serve.
So this is an interesting question, and I definitely see it as a status quo versus disruptor. And a disruptor brings positive change and is a help, is helpful for everyone. Change is done when it's done respectfully, collaboratively. We are the respectful ones. The status quo will go to any means and attacks to squash any change. They are the ones causing chaos and conflict, and the majority of the community is disgusted by it and does not welcome it. The status quo doesn't listen and pays lip service to the community. That's not true engagement. They don't want community engagement. Lucas and I are being attacked because we're asking too many questions. Because I endorsed a proposal as a private citizen, which the New York State School Boards Association gave me the green light as something that I can do. The petitions were empowering and demonstrated the power of community engagement. We respect the institution. We bring ideas through proper channels. We, with structure and accountability, without ever undermining the process.
So we're talking, I think this is a very healthy dialogue. We're talking about two petitions that our ticket had proposed to voters. And we wanted to put them on the ballot for May 20th, along with the election of the board members. And there is a specific way to do that that Edgemont School Board has created. If you get 250 signatures, something can go on the ballot. It also says that the board may choose to reject it if it falls outside the power of the voters. The board did reject it for two reasons. They said it fell outside the power of voters. And they also said that the 300-plus signatures that we got within 72 hours were not legitimate because they were electronic and not hands-signed. The most important part here is saying maybe that we're misleading the public by giving them hope that this would be on the ballot. I'll say again what I said a little bit earlier. The board may reject the petition. They chose to do it. They did not have to. They were not required to reject the petition. And the petition could have gone on the ballot, and what you probably would have seen when that field trip petition went on the ballot, it would have passed so overwhelmingly that we would very quickly have overnight field trips back. The School Board of Education in 2013, in a ESF newsletter, one wrote, "These are the sweet moments, these overnight field trips, these are the sweet moments of the core of an Edgemont education that our children will always remember." It's the core of an Edgemont education, it's not here right now. The petitions worked. It sounds like the board listened and will be adjusting the negotiations with the teachers in the fall, as we heard at the ECC meeting a few days ago. Petitions are a tool. You wrote them very respectfully to help your voice be heard. Thank you.
So let's speak about, a little more about petitions and then some other disruptor activity, I suppose. So petitions, as two colleagues here have said, were a tool. And the overwhelming response, I think, was one of the largest showing of community activism we've seen since the outbreak for the bond. People came, quickly signed it, there was a clear demand for it. And I think, I'm not going to talk about the legality of it, I have my opinions on that, and we can talk about that another time. But the way the board handled that overwhelming community action, I thought was demonstrative of the problems that are currently existing with board communication. Over 300 people signed a petition, signed two different petitions, saying, "We want this on the ballot." Now, they don't think it's legally can be on the ballot, that's fine. They could have actually discussed it. The last three minutes or so of a two-hour board meeting, they swiftly say, resolve that we're rejecting this, it's legally insufficient, and there's no electronic signatures. They cite the three areas of law. One didn't necessarily, I think it was the wrong citation. The other two dealt with the powers of the board. There was nothing about electronic signatures. They didn't bring the lawyer app to explain it. They didn't explain to future residents who might want to file a proposition, how to do it properly. There was no even attempt to educate or communicate that these very real concerns of so many people in the community were being listened to or heard. It was just done in the last couple of minutes, quickly when the room was almost empty. And it's just indicative of the problems with communication. If the board didn't want to propose or approve those, they're certainly within their rights, as we have said. But they could have met it head-on. They could have said, "We appreciate this, we're going to look into it." They could have done more, please, they could have done more than what they did, which was put at the end of the meeting with no real notice, and not explain themselves as to why. It just, it speaks to a lack of willingness to engage. We want to change that. Let's meet these problems head-on. There's differences of opinion, but they should be discussed.
At my workplace, we have a giant wall with Einstein's quote that says, "Vision without implementation is hallucination." This very well captures my philosophy on innovation in education. True disruption cannot, isn't just about bold ideas, it's about deeply understanding how we get there. Disruption requires a strategic, long-term plan. Lessons from successful districts and buy-in from across the entire ecosystem, communications, policy, legal, budget, and administration. Even the most innovative ideas must work within our system and benefit every child in our care. That's the difference between thoughtful disruption and purposeless disruption. We cannot be effectively disruption without a data-driven understanding of our goals and how we'll measure impact, both short and long term. In my professional work, and I'll geek out a little bit, we begin every program with a core strategy and a sophisticated measurement framework. We look at short-term, what we call sprint signals, and long-term indicators that we call endurance signals. These metrics help us plan and understand what disruptions are worth the short-term risk to get to longer-term goals. This is data. It's a data-driven decision-making process, and it enables us to navigate short-term transition challenges that enable us to achieve long-term transformation. That, in my opinion, is the definition of true disruption. It is a roadmap for how we get it done.
Once again, the question, how do you balance being a disruptor versus being disruptive? I think you're seeing some of that tonight. The fact of the matter is, I hate buzzwords, right? Disruptor is a buzzword. And I, you know, I invested professionally for the better part of 25 years behind disruption, right? Whether it's distressed companies undergoing change, new man agencies, et cetera. But we're talking about our kids, right? We can't go long and short kids. The citizens in the audience say that we move fast when things, we're seeing how Doja's working out, not so well, right? So let's get back to it. Use my time. To be an effective changer, right? Let's not use disruptor, let's use changing. You need credibility, right? Because if you're going to change things, you have to have credibility, saying like, "This is where we're going." This is, sorry, I'm anxious now, so I'm not. But, you know, you got to bring people along. You got to say, "Oh, that's a great idea. Let's get there." We know it's going to be hard. We know it's going to be challenging, but we can get there, right? And you have to have an action plan. What are our benchmarks? What are our milestones? How can we measure our success? Because if it's a long-term vision, you got to be able to pivot. You can't just say, "Hey, we've been going down this path for two years. It's been, we've got two years of some cost, we got to keep going." If it's not working, you got to change, right? And that's what you got to do. You know, we've talked a lot about, you know, bringing involved, you know, getting the community engaged. And technology is a huge issue, AI, et cetera. One thing that I thought about is all my, my friends are saying like, "What are you doing getting involved in school board stuff?" As you know, I think I can make a difference and super interesting. And what I also say is like, you know what? I have friends who are leading multi-thousand-person divisions in both companies and software adopting AI today. Guess what? I'm asking you about AI, right? We're going to figure this out. We've got such great resources in this community. And that's how you get there, right? That's how we're going to get that change.
I'm going to roll.
Our next question is, can you please discuss your view of how the rollout of the 2024 bond went? For those of you who were on the board at the time, is there anything that you now think should have been done differently? For those of you who were not, what are your thoughts on how it went?
And Mark, Jeff, Grace.
Great. So I was not on the board. I'm not an incumbent. And maybe hopefully after a time you'll realize I'm fairly, also fairly independent. Let's be honest, the bond rollout did not, did not go well. And I think a lot of things we've heard about communication, you know, bringing the community in early is absolutely worthwhile, right? I mean, and a lot of these things are, when we know something's going to be controversial, it's, a lot of times it's obvious. So you got to engage the most interesting parties early. You have to show the evidence. You got to show your word. And I think that's, that's crucial. You know, back to what we were just talking about, you have to build that credibility. You have to say, you know, and sometimes, you know, things are tough and decisions need to be made. But, but I think, you know, a lot of that does go down to, to communication. And being as transparent as possible, showing that cost-benefit analysis. And with respect to bonds, I think there's also a misunderstanding of the purpose of a bond, right? You know, personalizing it. When we go out and buy a house, no one can save enough money to pay cash, right? Or most can't. Same thing with a car. You got to go to the bank because you're going to be living in it for a long time. You're going to be driving that car for a long time. That's what a bond is. You're dealing with capital improvements that are, that will be long-lasting but also very expensive. And that requires the foresight and thinking about the budget. When, when are things end of life? When do we need to make these changes? Some of these changes are state mandated, right, for, for the kids. You know, there's been questions, I heard, you know, as a board member a few, few weeks back, and there's questions about the reserves, and people don't really understand the reserves. The reason these reserves exist is because we issued, like I said, a part of the bond last year. Interest payments will be going up. Guess what? We have an interest reserve for that. The last thing we want to do is see our taxes going up and down, massive volatility. No one likes paying taxes, myself included. But the goal is to keep them as, you know, as low and as rising as low as I pass as fast as possible. And frankly, it's also part of the reason we have a bond.
Jeff?
Thank you. I think the rollout of a bond was highly problematic and is probably one of the core reasons I'm running today. I believe that the board heard ostensibly, said they were listening to the community, which I believe strongly wanted the bond proposal to be bifurcated, to separate out a lot of the safety issues and the road access issues. And that was the strong goal of the community. The board did not listen to that. They packaged it into one bond and it went down because of that. It was a huge voter turnout. A lot of people who typically don't vote, it resonated with them. And it's a lot of people who don't necessarily have kids in the school, didn't want... And it's a lot of people who don't necessarily have kids in the school, didn't want, you know, roads running through the fields, and all of a sudden said, "I'm going to come out and vote for this." And I think that there were two implications to that. One is it really rev people up about not being informed, I think especially those without kids in the school, felt like they were on the outside and money was being spent without really their input, and I think we need to really work on making sure everybody knows what's going on, send out mailers to the community as a whole, not just focus on the school. And then I also want to talk about, you know, Mark says that we can personalize, we have, it's not a house, we can personalize things. But this is the taxpayer money, and when the whole community or a lot of the community says, "There's a problem bundling this bond," and then the board doesn't, and then goes down and they have to reissue, and in that time, the interest rates go up, the tariff environment changes, bids start coming in higher, it's costing everyone in this community, we're getting less for our dollar because that bond went down. There is actual hard costs associated, in this case, with the failure to listen. So I really think future bond issues, future budgets, we need to get the community to put first, and then we can adjust things. We can, within reason, personalize based on the community's broad input. That is a reasonable thing, that's what people expect. Had they done that on this bond, it would have been passed many months earlier, we would have had the bids already, we'd be saving money, and it would be better for our kids in the community.
Okay, I am an incumbent, and so was part of that process, and my personal take is that the primary issue was that there was over-reliance on the 2021, 2020, 2021 process and outcome, because so much changed in the course of those intervening years. COVID caused things in a way that we had never experienced, and when the board picked the bond back up in the fall of 2023, after it had been approved and passed in 2021, the assumption was that the community's thinking was the same. Declining enrollment across the county suggested we'd have to reconsider the expansion of the A building in favor of something else, but otherwise, let's just get back to work we've lost two and a half years. There was also a sense of urgency around getting the bond in place so that we could time debt service payments in a way that kept tax levies stable, rather than, as Mark alluded to, experience a huge spike that had happened a couple of times in the last 20 years, nobody wants that. But the reality is, in that, in those three years, three years of students had graduated, three new kindergarten classes had come in, a third of my street's houses turned over, welcome new neighbors, and people came out of COVID more energized and activated than ever, demanding that their voices were heard. It was a completely different world. And it was understandable that a big miscalculation, that the board relied on the sentiments from the 2020 results. And like a math problem, when you get the first part wrong, your mistakes tend to have downstream consequences too. So from there, we held town cults to educate and inform residents of what was in the bond. Keep in mind, several of the projects had already been submitted and approved at the state level based on a previous, previous election. And the community showed up to those town halls understandably expecting that we were much earlier in the process would have an opportunity to offer feedback that would be considerable. So what do we need to do differently? And I ask this as we're considering revisiting some of the emergency access roads that were taken out of the last one. Well, first, we have to respect the community's intelligence by offering a full explanation as to how and why the board is prioritizing certain issues. We have to be clear about the considerations that need to be incorporated into potential issues. Our community is smart, you get it, you will understand the complexities. We have to allow the community to respond and provide feedback before things begin to solidify and take real shape, and we have to engage community members at all stages so that information flow continues to stay healthy throughout the entire process.
As Grace AI, so I'll finish your sentiment. The 2024 bond represented what many of us see as kind of a perfect storm of insufficient lead communication, as Grace articulated, over-reliance on historical data that didn't reflect our community's current mindset. The result was distrust, confusion, and a perception that decisions were made earlier and behind closed doors. As I kind of considered how we take this forward and the lessons learned, one of the things that came to me is, is how we approach complex decision-making at work. And one of the things we do, and that Mark and I were talking about earlier today, is the implementation of a pre-boardroom process. It's something that we do around complex issue, complex work problems, where we know there need to be key inflection point moments where we pause and ask for feedback and understand that there's going to be some complexity in the kinds of responses we get along the road. I think that, you know, having a board that really understands the power and potential of putting those kinds of processes in place, looking at pre-boardroom processes where we're backing out what the areas of decision-making that we know are going to require greater context, greater community understanding, and greater input really early on, I think are, is one example of a way of working, a new way of working for this board that perhaps can help us avoid some challenges around some of the big decisions, not just financial decisions, but also other community engagement, decisions that require deep community engagement and involvement. I think the other piece of it is, you know, enabling these conversations early on will help us have a more transparent and inclusive process that engages our entire community. And I talked a little bit earlier about, this is not just about going to some of our school community groups, but ensuring that everybody in our community has a voice.
From our community listening session last night, which took two and three-quarter hours, we had a level of dialogue that I've never seen in Edgemont before. One idea that came up is the ability to give every resident the option to take, to vote on things in an anonymous yet verified way to the board. So for some very complex topics, you can express your opinion and the board would know that it is actually a verified Edgemont resident. This kind of survey and this kind of technology is readily available, we just need to choose to do it. What that would effectively do would be to allow for petitioning to, to be much easier. Currently, the board wants to say, "You can only have a petition if you do regular signatures with your hand," but that's not 2025. We will dumb down on community engagement by giving people the tools to express their voice. Now, there is a concern, a criticism of this idea that I've heard, that says, "Well, people are going to try doing petitions for every single topic." Well, if people do petitions for every single topic, you, as the board, will see which ones have the most support. And that is what you want to hear, is the board, you actually want to hear what people think. So we will make it much easier for you to be heard. It's not fun. The reason the bond went down is because the board did not engage residents early in enough in the process to give them options. Working in Silicon Valley for a startup, a large startup, has its advantages, you see an agile way of doing things, you try to solve problems in an iterative way. And that means getting a lot of ideas out on the table. We need to make it easier for residents to engage, and then we'll have the information to prevent a bond from failing in the future.
So the rollout of the 2024 bond exposed serious concerns about how the process was handled. And some of the key issues really, really centered on, that the first mistake was that we, assumptions were made. The bond was based on an old survey that Grace advocated too from 2019. Five years later, you can't assume that the needs are the same. Mark says that you need to do a lot of communication. Well, the district hired, three years ago, a PR company to help with the communication in this district. They did a lot of it that year, but the bond yet failed. It was a missed opportunity for meaningful engagement. Many felt that the bond was rushed through with minimal input and just enough modifications to ensure passage. It should have empowered, been empowered the community and not dictate what they need. It wasn't democratic at all. It also had an economic impact on, almost lost hundreds of thousands of dollars and wasted admin resources and time. And when I and another board member wanted to discuss separating the bond into two propositions, as we did in 2021, we were totally shut down, and all we wanted was for the bond to be more representative of what the community wanted. The lessons learned is that we need to get community engagement, I mean input, and engagement from the beginning. That includes all the stakeholders, students, teachers, parents, and community members. All of these community stakeholders were ignored.
So for our last question, please share your thoughts on what should the relationship between the school board and the superintendent look like?
So the relationship between the school board and the superintendent should be a collaborative partnership that's characterized by clear roles, mutual respect, and shared commitments at educational excellence. A healthy board-superintendent relationship acts as the foundation for district success, creating stability that allows the educational mission to flourish. And so when this partnership works well, it provides leadership that benefits students, staff, and the community.
It needs to be a respectful and collaborative relationship, obviously. The superintendent is the executive of the school district, and the board is essentially the board of directors, and they're going to create policy strategies, and the superintendent is responsible for the actual execution and day-to-day operations of all of those things. So it has to be a very positive, respectful, working relationship. That being said, it also has to involve oversight. One of the mandated powers of the board is to review the superintendent and also, they sign the contract with the superintendent, et cetera. There needs to be a rigorous oversight process to make sure that the executive of our district is doing everything right, which they may be, but we just want to make sure, and one of the priorities has to be of the entire board, to make sure that there is a full review process, that that review process is engaging a number of different stakeholders, a 360-type review would be beneficial, which I don't believe happens at the moment. We would encourage a more thorough review process to ensure that essentially the executive leader of the district is getting everything right. If anything can be improved, the board can be aware of that and work with the superintendent respectfully to make sure that things are getting done properly.
We're having some technical difficulties with our timer, so.
Very, sit back, I love you.
Maybe an iPhone is going to suffice from here, we're in the home stretch, cut her off.
The relationship between school board and superintendent should be built on, obviously, on mutual respect, we've been talking about that, but also on candor, candor, with the discussion and exchange. Both the board and the superintendent must recognize each other's expertise and authority, building trust through transparent communication and consistent follow-through on our individual commitments. While individual perspectives will naturally differ, the board and superintendent must align on core educational values and on our district goals, as well as on how precisely we will be measuring not only the implementation of those goals, but the impact of those goals together. I believe that open and honest communication is very, is obviously essential. The superintendent should keep the board well-informed, all board members should bring any concerns or ideas forward through proper channels, rather than circumventing established processes. Practically, I think we've all kind of touched on this, we need to have a review process in place and transparency around that review process, not only for the community to see just exactly how we're measuring success, but it's only fair for the superintendent, him or herself, to, to understand what they're being measured against year over year. Partnership works best when both sides recognize and that they serve complementary functions and advance our educational mission from a balanced leadership team with a singular focus on student success.
Mark, Grace, please.
Thanks. So I will, I can just say at the outset, if I'm elected to the board, I will open, I will join completely open-minded with no agenda, because I think it's critical across, across the board just to have that trust, and I include you also in superintendent. You know, I think, as I said earlier, setting that long-term strategic goal and vision is, is very important, but at the end of the day, we are empowering that superintendent to execute that. That is, that is his role, and that is our role to then make sure that there's clear measures of accountability, you know, milestones Grace has spent, has been trained as to how to implement these things, which I know she's laser-focused on doing, you know, next year, this next term. But that's very important. I think, you know, giving that feedback, as, as Jeff mentioned, is crucial. I think a good leader, I think most of it have experienced, you know, is not afraid of, of, you know, hearing constructive criticism, but also, you know, having, taking feedback across all stakeholders in the community. You know, I think, as I alluded to earlier, it's also very important to have, you know, frank discussions and, and be honest. I am a straight shooter, and I've, I've learned that, you know, the longer you let some of these things go unsaid, the harder it is to have that, that conversation. So I think, to be said, there are issues, you talk about them respectively, constructively, as soon as possible, you address them, you go through the proper procedures, and, and, you know, I think that's the role of, of the board and the superintendent, how we can collaboratively, collaboratively work well together.
Because it's late, and I don't want to do this here longer than we need to be, I just forgot three paragraphs, I repeat what other people said, and I'm not going to. To begin, as I mentioned in an earlier question, the board has to do its job first and work with the community to clarify the district's vision, and then work with the superintendent, so agree on how that translates into annual initiatives, shorter-term goals, and evidence of success. You can't define or measure progress if the framework hasn't been defined in the first place, so that's on us. Then, we need to keep in mind that this is ultimately all in the best interest of our students, so that the goal is to achieve a successful outcome on their behalf, both parties have to stay motivated to keep working on this relationship, even in the face of setbacks, in order to maximize what we can do together. It's not personal, you can't give up. For a board member to sit back, leave things unspoken, stay passively frustrated, and complain and point fingers after the fact is a waste of time and compromises to the outcomes. We are ultimately the ones who've been asked to keep this district moving in the right direction, and our kids are the ones who suffer and take a pass on that responsibility. And in all honesty, if we get that initial frame right and set the bar high, the energy should be really positive and aligned in the same direction between the board and the superintendent. Annual evaluations can become celebrations of the big things we've accomplished together and offer excitement around the things that we want to tackle next year. And if there are demonstrated problems, then that's where a rigorous evaluation process, like the one I mentioned earlier, really demonstrates its merits.
The relationship between superintendent and the board is absolutely critical, it's the most important relationship that the board has. I've served on three nonprofit boards, it's for nonprofits, it's like the relationship you have with the executive director, they run the day-to-day operations, and the board provides the vision and the oversight. I'll touch on oversight for a moment. There's a concept Jeff brought up about a 360-degree review of the superintendent, that would be an innovation that our ticket brings to the mix. Currently, it's just an annual review, and it's not 360, meaning from the superintendent's subordinates and also other people that he interacts with, to develop a comprehensive approach. Also on the topic of oversight is tenure. We, as a board, are all responsible for approving who gets tenure from the recommendations of the superintendent. Unfortunately, a few years ago, our board was rubber-stamping the, we almost lost a great principal. And we only kept her because one resident stood up and she wanted to put a petition together. Nearly 500 people signed that petition, so let the board know this, this principal should not get pushed out. That's an example of when the board doesn't do its oversight properly to ensure that employee, that principal, that critical person who has an influence on our children's education, she doesn't get a fair shake in the counseling she needs, or anyone to know that what was about to happen was about to happen. The petition solved that. Final idea, how much time?
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you. The board president and vice president interact with the superintendent. It's absolutely critical that when you're going to either elect this ticket or that ticket, our vision or theirs, because whichever vision you select is the one that's going to drive the board. I recommend not selecting just one or another, but choose the vision that resonates most with you. Thank you.
So to wrap up our evening, thank you all. Everyone is going to have the opportunity to make a closing statement, each candidate will have two minutes. I'm relying on my timekeepers to give them a signal, because I can't see the clock anymore. So, Maureen, you're going to get started. So, Maureen, you're going to get started.
So, for my parents and mentors, I learned that true success isn't defined by diplomas alone, but by unwavering determination. I'm not the status quo, never have and never will be. I do not pay lip service to community, that's not true engagement. I'm running to listen, represent, and to work on behalf of the students of our community. We believe in our students, our teachers, our administrators, and our community's potential. Together, we can renew, revitalize, and reimagine Edgemont excellence. Thank you.
So clearly, this is an inflection point moment for Edgemont, one where a lot of good can come forward out of this process. We've heard you, and now it's going to be crucial to bring forward aboard a team. A team who can work together, leveraging all of our skill sets, and bring forward the transparency, vision, and bold questions that will continue to make Edgemont the exceptional district it is and always has been. We need to keep this dialogue up. We need to be brave enough to get out there with everyone in the community, including our neighbors who don't have kids in the school system, and have the complicated conversations early. And we need to all understand that the role of the board is not to boil every decision down to the point where everyone is happy. All of this becomes more practical if we apply data-driven approaches where possible. That removes ambiguity and emotion from the issues and puts the focus squarely on positive outcomes for our district. Most importantly, we need to center every conversation on our kids and building the best, most resilient, and prepared humans for the future. This is something I think we can all align on. At the end of the day, this district is world-class and will continue to thrive. However, we're nothing if we have base and civility and building communities that work together, listen to each other, and work harder to find common ground than what divides us. We want our kids to look at us, the process, our behavior, and see us as models and what they want to look like when they grow up. I'll leave you with that. Let's please continue this critical conversation and continue to build forward together.
In running for a school board, I was surprised that a candidate would not be allowed to talk to the principals, to ask questions of how are things going from your perspective? It wasn't the principal's fault, it's a district policy that's new, that says, candidates can't approach principals and ask what they see from their perspective. It's a default of closed. The email actually said historically, candidates have not been allowed to talk to principals. But actually, historically, go back just about 15 years, that was highly encouraged. We are set right now in a default of closed, in a default of you don't get your answer when you stand up at that podium in a kind of contrived and formal setting. You don't get an answer right on the spot. By default, right now, we are closed. We have board leadership now that could change that before the election even. We need to flip frame, default of closed to default of open. It's hard to understand the difference between just communication and deep engagement until you experience it. They sound like different buzzwords, communication, engagement. Communication, engagement. Talk to the people, please, who went to, the 40 people that were at that session last night. And you'll see, we transformed from icy to pleasant. We found common ground from people that have been opposed on issues in our community for years. Engagement can help break through. Let's renew, revitalize, and reimagine Edgemont excellence together.
Thank you again, everyone, for being here. You're still here, two hours later, oh my goodness, hour and a half. But very impressive, and, you know, when we started this office, it was amazing. And I think Lauren said, usually this is very poorly attended, usually there's only a few people here. So if that constitutes a disruption, that we have standing room only in the LGI for a board election, I think that's wonderful. I think that it should not be, there's been a lot of talk about this here, about how running independent of the SBSC, I think it's healthy that there are multiple choices for you. I encourage you, you know, we only have a little time to respond to things, but check out everyone's website, see what you align with, you know. Do your research, make intentional and smart choices as the community and as voters, because you're deciding who's on the board, entirely in your power. We've advocated for a lot of changes, as have they. See who feels right to. We really want the community back involved in a lot more decision-making. And none of this is crazy or radical. You go back a few years, and Q and A used to happen at every board meeting. You go a little farther, and you have budget hearings where they would go through line by line and discuss things. None of this is unheard of, none of this is highly disruptive. This is how Edgemont functions successfully for a very long time, and it has fallen by the wayside, the community has been sidelined. That is having financial impacts, that is having social impacts. Look at Facebook if you just want to get upset with the world. I mean, it shouldn't be, we need to set better examples. We can do better for our children, and I would encourage you all to really think about this vote. Talk to your neighbors, talk about the issues, even after this. Someone's going to win, someone's going to lose, but keep talking to everyone. Keep the discourse going, and let's continue to make Edgemont the special place it is.
Thanks for coming out and spending all this time. I know for a fact that there's at least one couple in the room who this is their date night, so. Says a lot about Edgemont, I think. I've learned a lot, there's been a lot of words, a lot of words. I think there's also been talk of, you know, real tangible action and what we can and should be doing as a community. We covered a lot of ground, but there's important things we didn't cover, right? In this really long hour and 45 minutes. For example, you know, there is a Blue Ribbon Commission from New York State that is changing the graduation requirements for our seniors. There will be, we're getting rid of regents effectively. That is not going to happen tomorrow, that's about, you know, probably what about, we don't even know, six to eight years, but we have to, we start planning now. We didn't talk about that, that's super important, right? That is, when you're talking about long-term change, disruption, we need to reexamine our curriculum. We need to say, are APs really the best model to deal with our kids today? Didn't cover it, happy to talk about it, love it. Next year, smartphone bans, right? Which, I mean, we might all love it, our teenagers, probably not so much, right? But it's going to be, we're going to have to write that policy. That is a New York State ban, right? That's important. These are real issues that we're going to have to deal with, right? We are going to have to deal with, talk about as a community, but deal with as a board and with all the administration, all the teachers. Just quickly, what I can promise you is, I will do the work, I will do it with integrity. We've heard about communication, I'm an open book, I put my email out there. I've had exactly zero pickups on that. Feel free to email me, it's on Facebook, which I posted for the first time since 2018 yesterday. I will be exiting Facebook when this is all done. I actually promised I will keep. And on that point, I think, well, first of all, I just want to say, I think we decided to do this, and I'm speaking for myself and Elise and Grace. I'm going to, I assume for you, right? This is community service, right? Community and service. Two separate words will really go together, that's what I'm focused on. I think hopefully we can, the Edgemont I moved to 14 years ago had that small town feeling. I think getting back to that civility, engaging productively for ourselves and for our kids and all stakeholders is critical, and I really do hope we get back to that. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't think any of us expected this election process to take this direction. When Fatima, who is conveniently, I don't think, not here tonight, asked me to consider running four years ago, I remember only agreeing after she promised that we don't campaign in Edgemont. And that's a refrain, a refrain that I've heard from all of every trustee I've come across. But through this process, I've come to understand some vital facts. Number one, the board of education is political in the sense that the community has a right to and will benefit from getting to know what you're capable of as a candidate. Number two, I've always known Edgemont to be an actively engaged community, but I have never felt more a part of something as I've watched friends and strangers drop everything to come together to protect the collective best interests of our students. It's been a masterclass in selflessness and so refreshing at a time when so much of the world is self-centered. And number three, getting to know Elise and Mark has been a gift. We are a small community, but you can still spend a dozen years in this district without crossing paths with amazing people, but for experiences like this. They are obviously impressive on paper, but they are even more impressive in person. So at the end of the day, I have found a way to appreciate what's happened. The vetting process was grueling, but this phase has also highlighted just how complex of a process it is to consider what it takes to be effective in this role. And I hope our answers tonight helped illuminate a small fraction, and really appreciate your efforts to be here. This decision is really important. Thank you.